I'm Pam Stevens, I'm Vice President. Barry Vos, our President, is out sick tonight. But on her behalf, I would like to welcome Scouts BSA, Troop 1212 Honor Guard, to do our flame ceremony.
Audience, please rise to the ready. Hold it, Barry. Hold it, board march. Post, powers. Can I go? Scouts, lift. Two. Board march.
Thank you so much. Um, before you sit down, it feels to me not quite like we're done until we've actually said the pledge, so if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on our business is the recognition of first responders. Uh, do we have anybody here from the San Diego Police Department? Possibly not tonight. How about the San Diego Fire Department? Not tonight either, moving right along. The next thing is, um, the approval by Town Council Minutes, by Town Council Members of the Minutes from our March 6th meeting. You may remember, we did not meet in April. It was the same night as the National Basketball Finals, and everybody was cheering, so that did not happen. The Minutes have been posted online, and hearing no objections, I will consider the Minutes approved. Okay, the Minutes are approved. I will give a report, just a really brief report, on behalf of Barry Vos. A couple of exciting things. First excitement is, tomorrow is the deadline for high school seniors who have loved doing community service to turn in their applications for the Miramesa Town Council Burned Goodwin Scholarship. Eric Kolbitz is our Scholarship Committee Chair. Is Eric there, John? I'm not sure, he might be joining us a little later. But he is the one. Most students submit the application online right now, but we can also take it in paper. And, uh, we always have fun honoring the scholarship winners at the June meetings, so that's something great. The other thing that is in the works, I won't steal Michael Spencer's thunder, because I'm going to introduce him in just a moment, to talk about the fireworks. Things are going to be a little different this year, and Town Council's part of it. Barry's the one who really has the pulse of what we're thinking about doing, but I've been talking with her, so I can chime in after Michael, uh, does his presentation. We'll also have a presentation in the middle of the meeting by Susan Strankovich of the Miramesa Women's Club. Women's Club did a fabulous event weekend ago, on the Sunday, April 23rd. It was a celebration of the Little Free Library there at the park, and just a really nice community celebration. And, oh, Eric, I was mentioning the scholarship just a moment ago, so we've got good things going on, and without further ado, I will introduce Michael Spencer, the President of the Source Mesa Fireworks, to tell us all about what's going to happen this year.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak here. Uh, I'm here finally with some happy news after the last few years, uh, that we have a fireworks show for Independence Day. Now, it's not on July 4th, unfortunately. It is on July 2nd, the Sunday. So that's only for Sunday anyways. So, uh, unfortunately, it's a financial situation where, um, fireworks, check that requires about $35,000 to put a show on, uh, 4th of July. Um, it's out of our price range. Our show's going to be about $18,000. It's still, it's still going to be pretty good. Have just about 500 fireworks that are going to be going up. Uh, another change to it is that it's happening over at Wagenheim, because we, I'm sure you've all heard some of the conversation about Miramesa High School. There's too many new buildings, too many new roofs, which are, you know, energy efficient, so we're keeping the price, you know, prices down, keeping the, the school climate controlled, but they don't handle embers very well. So where we can go is Wagenheim. That is the last location in all of this community in which we can actually still hold fireworks show of any value. We get to have our four-inch shows, which are still pretty good. We don't get our big six-inch show, which we used to have, you know, you need to have a significant safety net around you, um, a safety zone, which we cannot have anywhere in this community. Uh, we're, at this point, we are about $4,000 short of making the second payment to pay for everything, as well as any other incidentals that may come up. If you are so inclined, you can take one of these home, there's a stack in the back. You can make a donation, you can hand it to your neighbors, and ask for donations as well. They are, uh, as we say here, contributions to Scripps Mesa Fireworks are tax deductible to the extent the law allows. So if you're one of those who gets itemized and everything, uh, it's beneficial. It's also, um, if you look around the community, fireworks shows don't exist much anymore, so we are among the last in all of San Diego still going on, and we are supported by the community. We are not supported by the, by the city, by the county, by the state. I know, I believe Poway still gets some funding for their own, you know, uh, city stuff. We don't have that luxury. So we depend on the community to, to keep the fireworks show going, and, um, it's been three years since we've been able to do this, actually four, considering it was 2019 was our last show, so. We're happy to be back, July 2nd, Sunday, 9 o'clock, over at Wagenheim. Does anyone have any questions? Sir?
Is, uh, working with the Community College about parking and things like that, or?
We have, we have not yet started a conversation with, uh, Miramar College, but definitely that is a really good spot to look, to view from.
Yeah.
So it'll be a matter of, uh, finding the folks on the, the board there that can, you know, put it out and allow something like that to have, actually happen.
And also getting the word out, because they're going to hear.
That's right.
Putting the fourth.
Yes. And I will stand up and say that although there haven't been conversations with the college yet, and Wes Lundberg, who's the president of the college, couldn't be here at tonight's meeting, but what has happened so far is that Barry Vos, the Miramesa Town Council President, has been in touch with the Park and Recreation officials for the use of Hourglass Field Park for an informal Miramesa community picnic that Miramesa Town Council can officially host the afternoon of July 2nd, leading up to fireworks. It won't be as formal a thing as Fun Day. Don't imagine a carnival and booths and that sort of thing, but it will be an opportunity for families to come up, come there mid-afternoon, bring your own food, maybe have some food booths, a, a food truck, or a food something or other, and a beverage something or other, so that it will be a community gathering place. All of that has not yet been done, because Barry has just ended tax season with her job, and we're, we're going into high gear. The Town Council Board, I would imagine, will have a meeting within the next week via Zoom, once Barry gets her voice back, and we will, we will be talking about what we can do. The idea is that people need to know that the Miramesa Community Park is not the place to watch fireworks from this year, because the nature of this show, not being quite the giant-sized shells, you're going to be seeing it from Hourglass Field Park. And that's the place to gather. The college is definitely a place to gather too, and I imagine they'll be excited about it. Uh, so that's, that's what's in the works, but no details yet about what's going to happen for that. What's definite is, the fireworks are happening.
I'd actually be remiss if I did not thank everyone who helped make this happen, so Park and Rep, so Andy, uh, if you want to say Andy Carr, that's wrong thing, Andy Field, which makes sense. So thank you to Andy Field, uh, one of our other advocates. Everyone's SDUSD contractor who is working on the field. Uh, I, I can't even begin to name how many folks are, are involved in actually this reality, and I thank you every much, and I thank you super well for allowing me to come here. Thank you.
Michael, I'll, I'll jump up again and say one other thing too. One other difference between Miramesa Community Park and Hourglass Field is we have been told that Hourglass Field is a strictly no-alcoholic beverages venue, so Town Council will probably need to pay for security guards in the afternoon as part of doing an official event there, even a Loki event, so that people just bring their own non-alcoholic beverages, or what we have for sale there is non-alcoholic. So, celebrate! We, we will have the festivities in our own hearts.
You know, get one person and do it except, I'll make $1. We will have no problem.
Yeah.
I think we're very person.
Each person will donate $1.
We have such a large community.
We need you guys' help. We can't do it off the mini-small, we can't.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, as far as spreading the word too, I think Miramesa's a community that revolves around its schools, and if every single school community could spread the word about what we're doing as a local 4th of July weekend celebration, and that we need funds for it, like the word was spread about Taste of Miramesa for the schools directly, that would be an awesome opportunity to, to spread the word. Other groups, not just Town Council, but the Women's Club can spread the word, the Senior Center can spread the word, and I think there's a lot we can do.
Yes, is there no Venmo or anything like to share visually?
Venmo, you can use for Final One C3s, there's a PayPal option and our website as well. So scrippsmeasefireworks.org will lead you right to, uh, written and donate.
Good point, that's right, there's, there, there is that website, has that link. Okay, um, any other questions about that before we, we move on? This may be a really speedy meeting. I mentioned the Miramesa Women's Club, so moving into government and community resources, let's meet the Miramesa Women's Club. Susan, you are on.
Hi, Susan Strankovich with Miramesa Women's Club, and we have been in Miramesa since 1974. We are a small organization, but we do a lot of wonderful projects. I've been a member for 10 years, and as Pam said, our last, our last event was a Little Free Library celebration. We had our first anniversary of our Little Free Library. It's in Sandberg Park, and it's the first Little Free Library in the city park in San Diego. And we just had a wonderful time. And the whole idea of the celebration was, even though we have, if you haven't been there, we have two Little Free Libraries. One is a regular-sized one for adults and teens, and the other one is a shorter one for kids. And even though we have adult books all the time, we really wanted to focus on the kids, because we don't have a lot of kid-friendly activities in Miramesa, where we really focus on kids. I think the last one was at Park and Rep. They did a great job for the Easter hunt, and that was, that was really fun. And so we had, uh, we had Feed in San Diego come, they did a food drive, we had the library come, talk about their projects, we were collecting books, we had a, a wonderful musician who teaches kids music, and he did a sing-along, and he brought all these little instruments for the kids to play, and that was really fun. There was, uh, somebody doing face painting, and we had, uh, we had, we had cornhole, and we just had a lot, a lot of fun. We had, uh, we gave out, uh, seed packets to get kids excited about gardening and growing their own vegetables. And for those of you who don't really know very much about what we do, we focus on a few major areas. One is education, which is my passion, and another one is women's health and well-being. Um, we have a project called Comfort Pillows, and those are small little pillows that some of our members sew, and they get free of charge to individuals in hospitals all over the country, and they help women who are undergoing breast cancer treatment, and it really brings a lot of comfort to them. I don't sew, I'm the resident nerd, so, so I, I do the newsletter and the flyers and social media. Um, we also work very closely with Door of Hope, uh, they're in Currie Mesa, they're an amazing organization, and they're a transitional housing program. And they take women and their kids who have either been homeless or trafficked, and they work with them for an entire year, helping them with job, job skills, and getting a GBD if they don't have one. So we provide, um, every holiday, we provide all kinds of gifts for the kids and for the aunts, and then school supplies, and we've adopted Walker Elementary School as a school that we work with primarily, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but Walker has 76% of their children low-income, which is the highest percentage of any elementary school north of Highway 8. And so we, we, we've done a lot of books with them, we have a, a reading program that, that we raised funds for. We do, we do so much stuff. I have a flyer back there if you want to see some of the other things we do, and if you'd like to receive our newsletter, I would be happy to, to send it to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we are moving right along, and I see our library branch manager, Anna Gibson, right on time, come on out.
Is that timing excellent? It's the first time all day. Hello, thank you for having me here, thank you for being involved in your community, thank you for making us feel supported and welcome. On behalf of all my lovely staff, I have to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Almost all of you are just delightful people. And it's a pleasure to serve you. Wanted to highlight a couple of things. First of all, how many of you have heard that we are now open on Sunday? Staffing in place, it's been tough, and that's why it's been so long delayed, but we are open every Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00. So you have four hours to come in, to fold, and use the computers, and anything else you want to do in the library that is in keeping with our rules of conduct. That's the first thing I wanted to mention. The second thing I wanted to mention, and I'm glad that I'm following Susan, is because she's not only involved in the Women's Club, she's not only involved in a number of other projects, but she runs one of our book clubs. We have two book clubs that meet every month here, so if you'd like to read, and you'd like to socialize with other folks that like to read, um, she leads the Bibliomaniacs on the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30, so I remember. And they're a great group of mostly women, but it's not limited to women. Um, if anyone who would like to read books, we have lists, we pull in books that they will be, that they are reading, and you have a book second Tuesday. Anyone's welcome. Um, the second book club is called the banned book club. They tend to read things that, um, well, have been banned or challenged, or are kind of adjacent to that. So, and they usually also read, um, the one book, so this is a good, you know, excuse for you to read the one book if you think, yeah, I want to be part of this discussion, to actually be part of the discussion. And the beauty of that group is, they meet the last Tuesday of the month, also at 6:30, and they meet via Zoom, so you don't, you can come to the discussion in your jammies, you can have your tea, you can, um, basically stay at home. So if you don't like to drive at night, or you have some other reason that you cannot physically be here, they are a great group. And they have been meeting in the chorus and meeting for years now.
Yes.
And Pam Stevens runs that group, so both our book club ladies are in the same room. That's mainly at the lab, our ideal lab, with our, our, um, 3D printers, and our blow forge laser cutter, and our die cutter are very much operational, more or less. People are coming in, they're starting to make all kinds of great things, so I challenge you, you know, welcome you make this month or next month. On hand, we've got people to help you. Um, you have a couple of hours through the evenings week, you have three hours on a Saturday morning. Come on in, see what it's all about. That's all I have. There's all those checks, the outline, the calendar for all of our events, or if you're in the library, we usually have our calendars posted. Just come in, take a look, take a picture, if you want something to go out of your refrigerator, borrow your phone, but the online calendar is always accessible. It's on our site. And when I say our site, I mean San Diego Book and Library. And, anytime, come check us out. Are there any questions? All right, thank you for your.
Okay, well, the next item is the Miramesa Community Planning Group report from Jeff Stevens, Chair Emerance.
So, as you know, I've been chair of the planning group for quite a while, the last seven years. Been on the group a lot longer than that, but I hit my term limit, so I have to go off for, for a little while, and that meant that the planning group had to choose new offices. With myself and the vice chair went off, so a lot of the C P people went off, so I said, well, who shall we, who shall we get to chair this group? And we decided on someone we all, all know well, and in addition to the planning group, or former councilman Chris Gate. So, Chris is now the chair of the planning group, and, uh, that should be interesting. One other thing, the, um, the last meeting, we reviewed a project down at the corner of, uh, Cerro Vista, Vista-Cerro Parkway, West Boulevard, Escobar, Water Ridge Fountain Hills. They are building some new large buildings, uh, right next to that, and we reviewed those. Planning group uses a page on the Town Council website as its website. I, if anyone's interested in that project, the plans were posted on that, on that site. I encourage anyone to look at that to find out more about the planning group.
Okay. Next, we have Miramesa Community Recreation Group. Joe, where are you? There you are.
I'm just wandering around. So we still have three projects going on. The one at Wagenheim, which is allegedly 65% done, it was supposed to be done in April, probably won't be done until September, October. We have Salk, which is, um, probably 15% done, it'll be done next year. And, uh, our Phase 2, which is our swimming pool and skateboard park over here, it's progressed from the, what, the City Planning and Land Use Committee or something, it's going to go to the City Council pretty soon, uh, hopefully for a vote. We've kind of guaranteed that, assuming if they don't put in this pool and stuff, that we're going to have a revolution that they don't want. And the other thing is, we just had a, uh, there's a group in La Jolla that raises money every year to put trees in parks, because they want healthier climates and stuff, and they just spent like $50,000 putting trees in, Mason Verde over here by, by, uh, on Gold Coast, right off of Commune Ruiz, next to Mason Elementary, and they put in like, uh, 25 trees with, with the, um, plumbing to make sure that they're water. And they do one of these projects every year, this is their fourth or fifth one they've done. So they, Jeff and I were there, they came over and really a nice group of people, I mean, raising money in La Jolla, which is always easy for those people to do, to come over and spread the wealth in our community was really kind of nice. So, um, we are having our next meeting, uh, next Tuesday on Lopez Ridge at 7 o'clock, if anybody wants to get involved, or whatever. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, um, Wes Lundberg, who's the president of Miramar College, emailed me that he can't be here tonight, so we will move into elected officials. I see Sheldon for, uh, Councilmember Kent Lee.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you, Joe, for my report. There is coming up the City Budget Town Hall on May 8th, and there's.
Yeah, there are flyers, if anybody wants, uh, council to wrap the room or take them on the way down.
Six piano at Miramesa College, uh, Classroom M204, that's the main, uh, math and business building at 10th floor of Black Mountain Road, San Diego. Uh, again, that's going to be the City Budget Town Hall on May 8th. There was the Phase 2, as, uh, as he mentioned about the Miramesa Community Park improvements, uh, that was brought up by the Active Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, which Kent chairs, and they approved the authorization to award a construction contract for Phase 2, uh, of the park. The project has been long awaited and overdue, and Kent is looking forward to providing more updates and making further progress on the project for the community. I think that is all because, uh, he did mention about the 26 new shade trees at Mesa Verde Park. Uh, this is going to be my last meeting here for, uh, uh, Miramesa, and, uh, your new representative is going to be Jermaine Roca Corba. So, I've been here a long time, through Chris's tenure, some of it, and, uh, now through Kent's, but things have changed, so, uh, your new, new person, Jermaine Roca Corba, uh, will be your new community representative, so.
Where, where are you going? Oh, never mind.
But you can report on it.
Jermaine.
Jermaine, J E, I'm sorry, J E R M A I N E, and Roca Corba, R O C A, C O. And Roca Corba, R O C A, C O R B A. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to, okay, I live on Gold Coast Drive, and they're just ripping the heck out of that road. Is there any way to find out your schedule on what you expect? You know, or block each, and that?
Yeah, there is. I'm actually emailing, I'm giving my address. We have an update up there.
Well, you're not going to meet him.
Yeah, but I, I'm still. Any other questions?
I just want to thank y'all. I mean, I worked with him for years. The guy is a baby when he does. He should not be able to leave Miramesa.
Now I owe $10.
Well, thank you very much, Sheldon. Okay, next up, we have San Diego Unified School Board, Sabrina Bosso.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sabrina Bosso. I'm your representative for the San Diego Unified School Board. I'm actually serving as president this year. My areas are Miramesa, where my kids will be raised our family here. Lived here for the last 25 years. I also represent Claremont and Kernie Cluster and Scranton Ranch. So big area, but a lot of exciting things going on. I did want to mention, when we were talking about fireworks, if anyone is going to be available, Joe, sometimes you're on at the, we have what's called a cluster meeting, and it's all the principals from all the elementary schools, the two principals from the middle school and Miramesa High School, as well as many parents from the different schools. And it's a good place to make an announcement for the fireworks. So if you're not going to be there, I'm happy to do that as well. But yes, yeah, I think it would be better to have it come from you. So if anyone ever wants to attend those meetings, they're on Zoom. So, you know, they're not a place to come and just complain. They're a place to learn about what's going on in the schools. You can make constructive, you know, comments, I guess, but, you know, try to make it more positive to the atmosphere. They're, they're, they're good meetings, they're very informative. And then also I wanted to thank Susan for, because the Women's Club also provides scholarships to some of our teachers. I think every year you guys choose teachers at Miramesa High School. And it means a lot to the teachers there. And they, it's not a scholarship, but I guess it's just money that they can either use in their classrooms or for themselves. And so we really appreciate that the Women's Club does not only in Miramesa, but also for our schools as well within the community.
The students actually choose.
Oh, they do? Okay, that's right. Thank you for reminding me of that. And I don't know if anyone's going to report on Taste of Miramesa. I used to run Taste of Miramesa. So I don't anymore, but I attended this year, and it was incredible. I don't know how many of you were able to get out, but it was an amazing event. And they, I think they raised, I got the email that they raised close to 20K.
Close to 20K. Last I heard, it was 18, but they still have the link active for donations.
Yes, yes, if anyone still wants to donate. All that money comes back to the school in the form of, to take students on field trips, to help with the school musical, to help with, I don't know, like they needed it, places to put the string instruments, you know, like these storage facilities that are like special for instruments, just different random things that, you know, they can't always get covered. So, so yes, thank you to everyone who supported that event. It's an amazing event. Next up, we do have summer school. So since COVID, we've been, we've gotten additional funding. We're hoping to be able to continue that when COVID funding goes away. But it's called Level Up, and it's for students. We try to focus on students, specifically places like Walker Elementary, our low-income students, but we also try to open it up to additional students as well, those ones that might just be struggling academically. And it's a program where it's academics in the morning. And we also have enrichment programs in the afternoon. So if you know of any students in San Diego Unified that are interested in summer school and wanted, or want to help, you know, get their grades up, I know they have separate program at high school that's more focused on academics, but we've also added this enrichment part of it. We partner with places like the San Diego Zoo. There's a bunch of like the Old Globe, a lot of like visual performing arts programs that we do, so it's really exciting. So we're really happy to be able to provide that to our students. Some of them that don't have anything going on in the summer, and otherwise they're just going to be probably getting in trouble or, you know, so, you know, not only are they getting enriched with programs that they would probably never have access to, but hopefully helping to maintain things like their literacy levels and math and things like that. Next up, this is more local to Miramesa, so I wanted to give a shout out to Joanne Schmidt. I don't know how many of you know her. She's a classified employee at Miramesa High School, has been there for many, many years, has volunteered in Miramesa for many years. I know Joanne, and she has a really inspiring story, and she won the district award for classified employee of the year this year for the whole entire San Diego Unified, which is a big place. So I was really excited for her, and she, we're going to have a celebration at the district coming out. I think it's next month, it's going to be in May, I should know the date. But if anyone wants to know or wants to come, there's a, going to be a celebration. So I was really happy for Joanne.
She's always in the ticket booth.
Always in the ticket booth at Miramesa, yes, yes. So, yeah, she's, yeah, so I was really excited. Oh, and then finally, I wanted to share, we're going to be doing a cool program this summer. So we started trying to do tutoring programs with students just for free within the community during COVID online. So this meeting before I came on the school board, I know many of you know Lori Heintzmann, she was the principal at San Francisco Elementary when my kids were there. I think when you're, yeah, you guys, yeah, know Lori and Yvonne, and those Lori's back. Anyway, we started a tutoring program from that group. We have students from the high school that are coming to help elementary students. First, it was online, of course, when we were in online learning mode, but now it's in person. Last summer, we had a Hickman, gosh, I think it's 40 or 50 high school kids that came. And at first, they were just going to, you know, to get their volunteer hours, but then they were like, I'm going to come back next week because this is really fun. And the little kids were so cute with the high school students, like they were more well behaved with them. And in some cases, their teachers, because they're like cool high school students. So I worked with the Hickman Elementary Principal, who's now looking at the district. She got promoted. So we are upping the ante this summer, and we have a program. We're getting about 40 or 50 high school students that are back at Miramesa. I made sure it was at Miramesa. They were also doing it at Canyon Hills. It's a pilot that we want to, you know, eventually expand. But they're going to be learning the, if you guys know Stephen Covey, The Seven Habits of Highly Successful People. It's a full leadership program around that, and they're going to get paid. And so we're going to be sending them then out to different elementary schools to then work with the students who are here at Miramesa, the four that are open this summer. And they're going to be sharing some of those leadership principles with them and also helping in the classroom. So what we're trying to do, these students in Miramesa, coming back to Miramesa, possibly to be teachers in our community. So it's a kind of exciting program, and we're going to hear more about that cluster meeting if you show up in our cluster meeting. I couldn't find out when it is. Do you know what, yes?
It's on the 22nd at 5:30.
Okay, perfect. If anyone wants the Zoom meetings, spazo@sandy.net, that's my school board email. Finally, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's reached out. My husband was diagnosed with a brain tumor in February. He's also been a very active volunteer in our community, and especially Miramesa football. And I know many of you reached out, and we really appreciate that because this community is very dear to us. We've been here for many years. So thank you so much to everyone. He's continuing to do well, and looking forward to having him home in about a week.
Moving along, the next item on the agenda is a report from the Kilo Hope of Mayor Todd Gloria's office. She couldn't be here tonight, but she emailed her recording, and Jeff will read a few highlights from it.
It's a long report. I'll include the full report in a minute, so I'll just include some highlights here. First part is about the mayor's new budget. It's called the Getting a Fund Budget. There's a link to it here that goes to the budget itself. The $512 billion focused on delivering major investments, including the last two budgets, while adding strategic new expenditures to address homelessness, create new streets, and enhance public safety. So it expands general fund support for homelessness, sending $24.5 million and maintaining operating nearly 70% of additional shelter bed capacity the city has achieved to date. It adds another $5 million to expand shelter capacity and $81.7 million for homeless services. For infrastructure, they are focusing on the roads. We're all happy to hear that, I'm sure. It says the budget is focused on delivering on the promise of those investments and additional investments in road repair, stormwater, and facilities like parks. The proposed budget allocates nearly $140 million to street repair and resurfacing. The fund is expected to enable the city to resurface 157 miles of streets, including both full overlay and story sealed. So there's more here, but the rest of it, I think I will include in advance.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to the next item is County Supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer. Rachel Beck, is Rachel here? Okay, how about State Senator Ryan Jones? I know Mark Fager is here. Welcome.
Thank you. So a quick update on some of the legislative items coming up or happening on. First, Senator Jones did send a letter regarding the Department of Utility Commission's so-called fixed charge price proposal program by P G D, Southern Conference Edison and S P G D. It's a proposal that's going to include fixed charge billing based on household income. This was also based on P G D 205, which was a rush-through partisan building with, had a lot of issues with it, and really needs to be amended, repealed, one or the other. And the senator is hoping that his colleagues on the other side of the aisle will look at reconsidering this and doing amendments to correct some of the problems with AB 205, which is what this is coming from. And P U C can't change the law itself. They're just making sure that it's implemented itself. Kind of is on that.
AB 205?
AB 205.
AB?
Previous.
AB 205.
Yes. Good news, SB 14 is a bill that he is cooperating with Shannon Grove. It's to make human trafficking minors a serious felony and subject to California's Rescrite Law. So that made it through committee. That's a good thing, because some things didn't make it through committee. Another bill that the senator, as part of with Senator Bill Dodd, is SB 74. And that's been on TikTok and other hybrid social media apps, and then that passed out of committee. And bad news is that a lot of the federal-related bills that have been proposed are not being pushed through the Republican Safety Committee, refuses to have any of them passed or voted on. Still trying to work with his colleagues on the other side of the aisle to get some serious legislation. It doesn't have to be the senators. It could be someone else that gets the federal legislation through. Do some of his colleagues? Different committees. And also, just kind of, kind of get the bad news, SB 31, which was the homeless encampment bill, that died in committee along with the gas tax suspension, but also SB 32. However, in the letter that the senator sent to Governor Newsom, there's still a couple of things you can do for relief for Californians is extend the suspension for the diesel tax that ends in September. And then we still have the annual gas tax increase on July 1 that he can delay to help provide with it. So whatever the prices are, July 1, they will go up further from an additional tax increase. So that's a legislative update that will affect you. Now, on a good, some kind of helpful news is we have a California, senior scam stoppers. And I know we call it senior, but it's just scam stoppers. We'll be doing at the, at the senior center on Thursday, the 11th, at 5:30 P M. You may have got an email. I have some flyers over there. This is actually a really good program. We work with Department of Insurance, Insurance Commissioner Rob, his office, Department of Financial Protection, Innovation, and the Contractor State License Board. And each one of those will provide about a 20 or so-minute presentation on tools that state has for you to vet those people offering to do services to, for your home and other insurance issues that they can help answer some questions on. Then they'll have some Q and A afterwards, each of these departments. It's really valuable. You don't have to be a senior. I think everyone should be scanning. So they call it that just because it's a lot of focus on it. That's it for now. Any questions, comments?
Yes, I want to back up a little bit. On the gas and electric, the charge on that, you mentioned that it's part of what you make a year or whatever.
Well, it's based upon income. It's a tiered level fee based on income.
Do we know what that income is? I mean, are they just going to pass that? And it surprises with?
No, there's a process through the Government of Public Utilities Commission. I'll follow up with you to find out what, how the tier system exactly works on it. But there has been initial proposals from S P G and E. And Southern Conference Edison and P G D have brought their proposal to fulfill that obligation. So yes, I will follow up. Thank you, yes.
I have a question about, same thing. People have solar. How is that going to impact them?
It's a fee, so it's not based on usage. It's based upon your income.
So if we've spent money to put solar into?
If you have that, you have, that's a, that's a separate issue, but then it's changed with P U C on the solar. So new solar, it's a whole new price program. Old solar, you're in. But this is specifically a fee that is based upon your income.
So additionally to?
You already have it, but it's based on usage. This is going to be based upon your household income. Potentially it's to subsidize the higher income individuals, would be potentially being the lower income individuals. Or they would have a higher fee. Obviously, the higher income folks would have a higher rate of turnover. So it was passed by AB, so P U C can't change that. So you can write letters about it, but they can't change the law. That's AB 205. Yes, sir.
What is the reason for this new thing where they want to make it upon your, how much money you make?
I, I don't want to reject the need.
Well, I mean, it's written already.
I know, but I don't know why.
Because people that make a lot of money can still pay higher taxes on their gas and offset people that are poor who cannot afford their rates right now. That's what it's for.
Well, how did Mr. Jones go on? He didn't, oh, this was the AB, so he did not support that.
Just a little bit ahead of the paperwork, because they look pretty bad. They're like quite high charges for most people.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up with the whole rate structure. I don't have, I do, I do have some details on it. So, yeah, I mean.
It has actually been approved.
Well, P U C is going to approve, has to approve the rate structure. So AB 205 has to authorize. Now they are proposing this to fulfill that. But P U C has to approve the rate structure.
So AB 205 was a bill that?
Has directed the utility companies to? I know it directed goals. I don't know the details of AB 205. But it basically authorized this pricing structure through that language.
So it is something that could be overturned in the legislature bill?
Yes, the legislature could, they could amend it.
They could amend it?
Yes. Meaning they could come back with legislation that could change the law. If they wish.
Well, definitely, that's something we would appreciate you reporting to us.
Get more of it. I'll get more of you covering that one.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And next up, shifting from state senate to state assembly, for state assemblyman Chris Ward's office, Mickey Hall, is Mickey here?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mickey Lethlemouse. I am a Assemblymember of Ward's office in the Assembly. So we covered a lot already, but I wanted to include that May is Small Business Month. So we're accepting nominations for small businesses in the area that are doing really good work, or who just love them, say they have the best pasta, whatever it is, please let me know. I'll send a link over to the board so that y'all can nominate someone for that. And then our full legislative package is available online on our website. One of them I'm kind of excited about is AB 275. That one would authorize, allow school districts to pay student school board members. So I know every school district has student school board members, and they do a lot of work, and they're there after school, and they don't get compensated for that right now. So Assemblymember Ward has proposed that maybe we should, you know, compensate them for their time and expertise. And then, what else? AB, the bill that we were just talking about, add a little bit more information. The goal, whether, whether you agree with it or not, the goal was to equalize the planning field and make it easier for lower-income people to afford to pay their bills. It is only for electric, so not for gas. And what else? And it's to promote people to use electricity. This is what I've been told by, I, by the bills, author and everything. So I haven't really, I'm researching it currently because it is a hot topic right now, and I want to be able to give everybody the best information. So I'll definitely update you guys about that. But what I've read and received so far was that the goal was to encourage electrification so that more people will use less gas. That's the goal. But does anyone have any questions?
How does it do that if you're, if you're suddenly charging people a lot more for electricity? How is that encouraging to use it?
That's a wonderful question. That's a really wonderful question. I have asked the same question. And I also asked for clarification about solar panels, because like people that install solar panels, you know, they're contributing to the grid. So I'm investigating that, but the C P C still has to look over it and decide whether or not they're going to pass it and.
If you're telling us that you're looking for an excuse to kill the solar for years, now the city is admitting to it. So you express our reservations?
Absolutely, yes. Absolutely.
I just want to say thank you to the Assemblymember for helping to pass the bill to help students that want to, yeah, be paid for compensation for being on school board, because there are students that were interested in running to be on school board that they also maybe couldn't afford it or couldn't pay for gas, or, you know, had to work after school. So this way, they, you know, it's an equity issue too. So we're really glad that, you know, that way it's not just me, Frank, or LaVoya that can, you know, have the time and money to do this. So we're trying to make up with any student by paying them so that they don't necessarily have to have that job after school to be able to come and do work with us in this case.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. All right, I will be sure to send this last of all to know how we feel about the bill.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, the next one is Congresswoman Sarah Jacobs Kathleen Deng. And I just got a note from her that she had to leave, so unfortunately, she's not with us tonight. But we do have, let's see, and I don't think we have San Diego Community College history board member Bernie Reiner sitting here tonight, do we? I think I recognized him. But that brings us to the part of our program for open forum. I had a sign-up list in bat. Did we get any sign-ups?
I don't know if they know what they were signing up for though.
Do we, Joe?
Yeah, I want everybody to understand that we have a planning group meeting that deals with all these issues about planning in Miramesa. And so when these representatives come to the planning group, we demand that they listen to what we want in our community. And one of the biggest problems we have right now in planning is we have a Carroll Canyon Road that we need to build from 805 to 15. And we have a park by the cemetery who, many, many years ago, the cemetery went to the city council and avoided their responsibility for building that section of the road. So now we are hitting up our senators and congressmen to give us funding for that, because it's a big section of that road we need. When Tree Roots goes in the Stone Creek going, if that Carroll Canyon isn't going through, we have a major, major problem going on here. So we try not to embarrass these people during the town council meeting, but we nail them at the planning group. So if you guys want to come to the planning group and see how we treat them, come on. Third, third on the other one.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we're moving on to town council committee reports. Jeff, you're on to tell us about street care.
So we are just starting work on this year's street care. It will be on Saturday, October 7th. The permit has been submitted. We've just posted the enter and performer applications and sponsor applications. So if anyone would like to perform at a street care or have a booth at the street care, or better yet, give us some money as a sponsor, then please go to the town council website and look at the street care page. Also, we have a committee that puts this together. We did lose a couple of people on the committee this year, so if anyone would like to be on the committee, please see me. You can use your help.
Thank you. When does that committee meet?
It meets the last Wednesday of the month.
The Azul?
The Azul.
Yes.
Easy to get to.
Thank you much. Okay, scholarships. Eric? Are you still here? There you are. Thank you.
Today, tomorrow, tomorrow is the last day. Accept any applications. Already got some students that are being proactive and submitted already. Just seeing a couple through, coming through email tonight. So if you know anybody graduating high school living in Miramesa and wanting to continue their education, please point them to the Miramesa Town Council website, and there's a link for the scholarship. They can apply to, a thousand dollar scholarship. And we're giving free up, free up on the way. So that increases their odds right there.
Okay, thank you very much. Pressures report. Jonathan?
Not much has changed since the beginning of the year. We started out with $63,000, and we have about $62,531, but we've got more expenses and more income with street care. There's a lot of company. So pretty stable.
Jennifer Colvin can't be here tonight, so we don't have a banner district report. But those of you who have noticed, there are some nice banners around the community, and she's the chair of the committee that works on getting those up, the ones for events that we sponsor and the ones that our banner district is used for outside events too. Membership. Yvonne?
Hi. Well, I just counted just before we went to the meeting. We had 97 current members. I have membership applications here. If anybody isn't a member or a fan or new, come on up. I can renew you right now. And there was something else that I wanted to say. Oh, you can do online as well.
Well said. Okay. And it's a wonderful opportunity to be involved in the community. Most of you here in this room already know that, but I am going to try myself to make a commitment to reach out to other friends who really should be town council members, because it's a basic thing to join. And I am a big promoter of encouraging both active members and inactive members. Not everybody has to be a big volunteer and do things. We'd like that. We'd like more of us doing that. But if everybody pays that $20 annual dues for a basic ordinary membership, or the $10 for a senior membership, or a companion member for the second one in a household, boy, that will expand our treasury just a little bit. And then you've got that link. Every member gets the constant contact meeting reminder, reminder when we post our newsletter on the website. We use the mail newsletter. Economics of doing that really went astronomical, and people enjoy reading it on their phones or their iPads or their desktop computers anyway. And that's where you can get the word. Jeff does a wonderful volunteer job doing the website. But we can't do it all alone. Those of us in this room know we need a lot more of us. So between now and June, how about all of us here bring in at least one new member? Wouldn't that be awesome?
Yes.
Okay. And on that note, I'll also say, if there's anybody who would like to help us plan this at the moment very amorphous Miramesa community picnic on the afternoon of July 2nd, stop back at the back table and give Yvonne or give me your name and email or cell phone number to be in touch, because I think it can be a lot of fun. It doesn't have to be a very formal event, but we do need to do a little bit of planning to make sure that it happens. And we'll be there to watch the fireworks at 9:00 PM.
Yep. So where are you going to have an opportunity for any like booths there? Or is this just like going to be totally informal? Because I'm thinking like family engagement or San Diego Unified, they come out with family meetings and things like that, but I don't.
I think we may be able to have some booths there. That's not the main focus of doing it, but, but I think that anybody who, that, that would be an appropriate thing, a family engagement. Joe, what?
They are not asking for people to bring barbecues. We do not want any barbecues, that type of stuff over there at Miramar College.
Good point.
It's a joint-use facility, and the college has, the requirements are pretty high to support their athletics, and we cannot have any damage done to those fields over there.
Right. So if you're bringing your own food there, we're talking picnic. We're talking, anybody remember the little golden book Mickey Mouse's picnic? I do from my childhood, and I read it to my kids when they were little, and that's the sort of thing. We are hoping to have some food trucks there. But again, I don't know quite what the rules are about that at the moment, so I'm not sure. But it's mainly just an opportunity to gather and have fun and watch the fireworks together. And I think unless there's anything else, we have a wonderfully early out tonight to let people go. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.